This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer, absent. Alderman Augustinovich.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Krakenberg.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Alderman Widener, absent, and Alderman Wilkie.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Would you please stand as the R.A. and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the green light. We're going to start. It's always fun to honor a profession, and it's especially fun to honor someone who's in that profession, who is part of our family here in Warrenville. So Christine, would you come up, please, our senior civil engineer? Because this is National Engineers Week. And they're bringing you treats every day, right?
Yes, of course.
I knew that. Whereas engineering is at the forefront of innovation and is instrumental in designing and creating the solutions that are shaping the world of tomorrow, through their creativity, expertise, and dedication, engineering teams are addressing global challenges, driving technological advancements, and making a positive impact on society's future. And whereas engineers have built the foundation for progress and development and contributed greatly to society by turning ideas into reality, engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative, innovative ways to meet societal needs. And whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters, cleaning up the environment, and assuring safe, clean, and efficient sources of energy, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future. And whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, we get to use algebra? Just do this to me. Whereas, National Engineers Week was established in 1951 to help increase public understanding of the engineering profession, and as we imagine tomorrow, engineers will be at the heart of the solutions to combat climate change, secure cyberspace, develop vaccines, and make the world a better place for us all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Obermeyer, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim February 18th through the 24th, 2024, as Engineers Week, and applaud the engineers working for the City of Warrenville for their significant contributions that they make to enhance the quality of life at Warrenville for all its citizens by providing for their health, safety, and welfare. Christine, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, we are in the middle of our budget process, and we have a couple of presentations this evening to help us understand what's being contemplated, what has been accomplished, and where we're headed in the future budget-wise. So tonight, we have the Administration Department first. We have our Assistant City Administrator Alma Morgan to make that presentation, and then we'll have Community Development after that with Amy Emery as our Director of Finance and Community Development. There it is. It's a long title. Anyway, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I know you're all excited and couldn't wait to hear the Administration Department meeting after the riveting presentations last week from Public Works and Finance, so I'm happy to be presenting this night. But before I begin my presentation, I would like to touch on what the Administration Department does, because you really can't see the work that we do. Unlike our other departments, Public Works, they decorate the community during the holidays, and we look like a Hallmark card. When a new building is built or a new business opens, that's the work of our Community Development Department. You can easily see that. But for Administration, you don't see what we do, and the reason for that is because our primary support, our primary function is to support. We support our elected officials, for example, by creating the budget agenda, the meeting agenda packets to provide you with information to be able to make decisions. The City Administrator provides weekly reports to you to keep you apprised of what the other departments do. We support our employees through the HR and the risk management functions from our department, and we provide, we oversee the communications and the information technology for the entire city. We, we plan, we organize, and we execute different programs and services for the entire community, all which are very important but are unseen. So tonight, I will touch on our fiscal year '24 decision packages and department accomplishments, and then I will also talk a little bit about the fiscal year '25 decision packages and projects and priorities that we would like to work on. The first decision package listed here tonight are citywide facilities and strategic, I'm sorry, citywide facilities and space needs study. We postponed that item due to various other projects and priorities, and also the ERP program that we have going on right now. Our focus has been to support the implementation of the new ERPs, so we have decided to postpone that to fiscal year '25. We were able to successfully complete the Strategic Planning Facilitator Decision Package. We selected Ref Telus, the consultant that will help lead the city in the strategic planning process, which is currently underway. One of the first accomplishments I would like to talk about is the seven fantastic employees that are on this slide that we recruited this year. Just in the last year, staff conducted over 46 interviews for recruitment, and that does not include the interviews that we conducted for volunteer positions, doesn't include any onboarding meetings that we had, or resignations for any of those volunteer positions. So we've been very busy. We do remain very committed to our existing employees and all of our new employees by providing training opportunities and also opportunities for executive coaching to help them be successful in their positions. So we, again, welcome these new employees to the City of Warrenville. One of the other accomplishments I'd like to talk about is the selection of a new IT managed services provider. With the assistance of Bay Court Group, we selected Orbis Solutions, a professional organization located nearby in Aurora, and we look forward to working with them to help us improve the city's information technology. Back in September, we hosted several high school students for a job shadow program. This was an initiative that we worked together with District 200 to help encourage and attract students to local government jobs. For Administration specifically, we had an opportunity to have them create a mock job recruitment ad with our communications coordinator. They were able to review mock resumes and conduct a mock interview, and we were able to give them feedback on what we do, what we look for when we're recruiting individuals to work for the city. We also had an opportunity to chat with them about the relationships that we maintain with other local governmental entities and how we all have to work together to move projects forward, and we used the Trailhead Project as an example. The community survey was completed. We had great results with that, and we plan to use those results in the strategic planning process moving forward. And finally, we implemented the dreaded Microsoft Office 365, successfully moved that forward, and that will be a key project to be able to help the city move forward with all the new ERP software implementations moving forward. Continued priorities for the remainder of the fiscal year include continued support with the ERP implementation. Specifically for Administration, we recently had our kickoff meetings with Granicus for the new website, the FOIA module, and for the citizen engagement tool. We expect additional meetings to be scheduled and more project work to move forward there. We intend to initiate discussion with the council regarding the electronic agenda packet, decision package that was presented in fiscal year '23. I also expect to have an update for all of you regarding the electrical aggregation program, as well as you've heard from the other departments, union negotiations will be happening this year with two contracts that expire on April 30th. And we also plan to continue working with the Warren Tavern Preservationists with the transfer of ownership of the Warren Tavern building to the city. All right, moving on to fiscal year '25. On March 16th, you will see two decision packages come forward from the Administration Department. The first one is regarding AV equipment and camera upgrades. A little bit of history, this decision package was originally presented in fiscal year '21. For various reasons, it was not able to move forward, so when we had Orbis Solutions come onboard, it was a good opportunity to have them come in and reevaluate our needs. And you will see two options presented on March 16th. Both of them have the option to livestream to YouTube, which we are excited about. I will provide more information at that budget workshop. The second decision package is firewall and switches. For those that don't know what a switch is, a network switch allows our devices, computers, printers, cell phones, internet, to be able to communicate with the city's network and then receive information back. The devices that handle this are old, and they are outdated, and they no longer receive software support, so it is crucial that those items be replaced. You will see additional information at the March 16th meeting regarding that item as well. I started having dreams about the letters ERP. So again, fiscal year '25, the primary focus will be supporting all of the departments with the ERP implementation as well as the responsibilities coming from our department. And additional projects and priorities that we will be focusing on is completion of the citywide strategic plan, of course, the special census that is currently ongoing as well. We will be supporting our volunteer boards and commissions, and we also have some other projects, such as coordinating with Public Works for the keyless door pad, door entry improvements, and also continued focus on recruitment, retention, and engagement with our employees. And finally, we are excited to work forward and partner with Little Friends and IDEC to become an autism-friendly community through bringing awareness, providing training to staff, and potentially identifying opportunities to improve accessibility.
I'm glad we're doing that.
So fiscal year '25, we believe, is going to be challenging yet exciting, just like fiscal year '24 was, but we're excited, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alma. Questions from the Alderman? Comments? Alderman Lockett?
I have some comments. You guys are more like the glue that kind of holds us all together. You know what I mean? We don't know what we'd do without you. We'd have to call some random people and ask them about firewalls, and how do I get my email back that I deleted? And what's my password? And what's going on?
All of the above.
Yeah, all the above. I mean, not me personally. Heard. I've heard. But a lot of stuff. You guys have a lot of things to do, and it just seems like it's always like that, and then you guys always make it happen. So that's incredible. So kudos to you guys. You guys are amazing. Love the idea of the electronic agenda packets, you know, whether that's a pilot program, or everyone does it, or whatnot, as I just said about the electronics and my emergency calls to you. But nonetheless, and then the streaming on YouTube would be awesome. Maybe not 4K, you know? Maybe we just do like 2K or something, you know, from my other side.
I'll make a note of that.
Okay. And, and finally, the autism-friendly thing with IDEC obviously means a lot to me personally. My two youngest boys are both autistic, so to see this, the mayor had said it was coming, so I appreciate you, Mayor. Everybody that had a part in it, I appreciate you. Alderman Widener for being the liaison for that. And it just means a lot to me, you know, that the community is standing up for those to have a voice and that are different. So I just wanted to make sure that that was said publicly. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to try to follow that, but I agree with everything he said. I'm just not as amusing as he is. You do, you do amazing work, and whenever there's a problem, you're always right there to help us solve it, and you're always anticipating things that need to be changed to keep us running smoothly, and that's very much appreciated. Obviously, you do a great job because we run very smoothly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Alma, you may relax.
Thank you.
And we'll have Amy up.
First, I was struggling to find the words to begin this presentation. You know my name. Reading the slide is unnecessary. I've had training here to prove that. But the word that keeps popping in my head is "first." Certainly, this is my first budget presentation in front of you, but upon reflection, "first" is a really good word to explain community development. We help people when they have an idea to identify their first steps to go forward with that idea. We facilitate public hearings to give residents a first look at a new project and provide feedback. And much of the work that we do leads to an occupancy permit, which is really just a fancy way of saying permission to use a space for the first time. So I'm beginning my presentation with the word "first." Here goes the first of what I hope will be many community development presentations. This presentation follows the same format and flow of the other department heads. First, we'll look at fiscal year '24, what we've been doing so far, and then a look, a first look at fiscal year '25, a decision package, priorities, and opportunities that we see. I have the pleasure in my job of spending a lot of time with entrepreneurs, and everyone I seem to meet lately has a great elevator speech. I'd never heard this term before, elevator speech. The idea is if you meet someone for the first time on an elevator, the door closes, and on your ride before the elevator opens, you could tell them what you do. With five different disciplines in community development, it's a challenge to come up with an elevator speech. But this is what I say. I work for the City of Warrenville, and as our mayor says, a community known for its big-city amenities, but also its small-town heart. I get to lead a talented team of professionals who are always visualizing a better tomorrow, genuinely care about the health and well-being of those who live, visit, and work at the city, and are not afraid to innovate, to solve problems. That's what we do. Leads to some conversations, and I like it. So to dive right in, in fiscal year '24, let's talk about our challenges. I have to begin by saying we've had a change in leadership. You can't ignore the fact that after 29 years, Ron Metzer retired. He left with that institutional knowledge. Yes, I have access to his email inbox. Yes, I'm in his office, but it's just not the same of having, as having him there. Leadership change requires building trust and respect. It can go very wrong. It can be risky. But change also brings opportunities for a fresh look, and that's been my focus over the last nine months, to learn, to appreciate, and to consider those opportunities. The second challenge that we've had is the ERP, the software development. It's a technology shift. It's a big challenge for our department, but it's a challenge that's well worth taking on. And Warrenville's not alone in this. You can talk to communities, many of our comparable communities are going through the same thing right now. Also, communities beyond just this region. You see it from coast to coast. It is a, is an endeavor that local governments are engaged in, and it has a purpose that's very important. It can be overwhelming. It can drain our resources, but it will be transformative. It will pay dividends in efficiency, in customer service, give them convenience and enhancements that they don't have today, and provide transparency. Lastly, it can't go without saying that our economy has been a challenge. I like to live by the philosophy that you don't let the things that you can't change have an impact on the things that you can. But the reality is, we do have economic uncertainty. We do have rising inflation, and we are still struggling with some supply chain issues that have a direct impact on development. But we're not letting those things stop progress. We are continuing to acknowledge their impact, but we're looking forward. The foundation, the roots of community development are summarized by the data on this slide. These numbers literally represent thousands of hours, calls, meetings, plan reviews, staff reports, emails, process requirements, inspections. These are the lifeblood of community development. They don't always get the attention of special projects, but they are absolutely critical to community development success. And these are the numbers that were impacted by the economic uncertainty that we face in 2024. So far, fiscal year '24 hasn't seen as many project starts as were predicted a year ago at this time, but we have still seen great things. Projects are bringing in new residents. They're maintaining our economic, I'm sorry, our entertainment venues, and they're adding restaurants to reflect Warrenville's growing diversity, new choices, new opportunities, new places to gather. Warrenville naturally is more than just a logo. It's a real priority for the Community Development Department. You can see that on the slide here in the continued commitment to open space and environmental projects I have listed here. Warrenville's recommitment to the Greenest Region Compact further recognizes that the city has what we have accomplished and what we will continue to accomplish in the realm of sustainability and environmental stewardship. Economic development probably has seen the most change in fiscal year '24. In part, you can blame me. I have new ideas and experience and a new energy in that area. It's been my focus for many years professionally. But it's also a necessary response to the economy. As Warrenville approaches build-out, as the city continues to diversify, and as we learn to adapt and successfully manage change in the economy, community development has focused on crafting new strategies to support local economic development. We have strengthened our relationships with our partners. Those would include Choose Do Page and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We've collaborated directly with other community development leaders in the region to think regionally about what we can accomplish. We've interacted more directly with local entrepreneurs to find out from them directly, what is it you need? What is it you want from your community development department? And we've made process improvements to simplify and encourage development, and this has included our pre-application process, to get developers on a pathway to yes as early as possible, so that they are, when they're first crafting their ideas and thinking about what they want to do, they're having conversations about, with us, so that we can help them move forward. The fiscal year '24 work plan highlights specific economic development actions in OTRS Number Two, and I'm happy to report that those milestones are being achieved. In fact, on tonight's agenda, you have the Votel Agreement ready for signature. Okay, no secret here. We are government. We regulate. We make laws. We make policies and ordinances. But the key is not to overregulate, and I think we're holding to that goal. Above the fold here on the top of this slide, you see the headline, "Warrenville by Design." This traditional overlay is focused on defining what it is we want to see as a community. It's a different approach to development. Rather than setting forth minimum standards and allowing a developer to come in and prepare a proposal to respond to, we're shifting gears, and we're developing a set of regulations that define what we want for the right developer to build. Those regulations are now available on the website, and there will be an open house coming up on Monday beginning at 3:30 for people to come in and to check out those regulations firsthand and see what they have to say. We look forward to the feedback that we'll receive. There's a handful of other regulatory actions on this slide, and each of these were undertaken to address issues and to create opportunities. I won't go through them all here. I'm certainly willing to and happy to answer questions about them, but they're all driving toward one point, to make Warrenville friendly for development, to accomplish our goals, and to address issues that we may be facing. So now, let's look ahead to 2025. On March 16th, you will see community development is proposing one decision package. It's for a retail recruitment plan, and it has the potential to be a real transformative tool for our department. Here's the story. So many people will come to me and say, Warrenville needs this, or it needs that. You can fill in the blank. Trader Joe's, Aldi's, Home Depot, Starbucks, Andy's, a hotel. I could go on and on, and I bet all of you have an idea to share with me as well. Warrenville's also in a really unique position in that, as a city, we own some key development sites and can have direct control on what happens on some of those properties. We know the numbers. We know that the city's population is around 15,000 people. More importantly, to investors, we know the trade area is about 65,000 people strong. Community development is really great at responding to requests that come in. We've got the processes, the tools, and the staff ready to handle that. We haven't needed to be as focused on actively recruiting development, and that's where this retail strategy comes in. It will offer an analysis of spending patterns. It'll identify specific gaps in our local city market and retail trends that we can respond to. But what I'm really excited about, and the most important part of it, is it will focus on specific locations here in Warrenville, vacant sites, infill sites, sites that are underdeveloped and ripe with opportunity for redevelopment. It'll compare the data for our community and our market area to those sites and give the retailers what they're looking for, the perfect location that meets their criteria, that has the traffic counts and the acreage and the trade area that they need to support their business. It'll lay the foundation, really, for connecting retailers with property owners and brokers in the area. It'll be the key to get us noticed and to get those developments, X and Y, into our community. Fiscal year '25 is going to be transformative when it comes to OTRS Number Two. We have the plans in place. The agreements are ready on your agenda. Renderings are done. Fiscal year '25, we will see the beginning of the physical transformation of OTRS Number Two. Cleanup, creation of parking, right-of-way upgrades, the site will look like a destination for new development. This will be a huge undertaking, especially for our engineering team, which I'm so glad you recognized tonight. But it will be an undertaking that is well worth the effort, and I know that you've been committed to it for many years, and I'm excited to be here at this point in time to see the transformation take place. But OTRS is far from the full story of fiscal year '25 for economic development, or for community development, rather. We'll be focused, just as the administrative department is, on ERP software design, building, testing, and rollout to our customers. After the Warrenville by Design regulations are completed in this fiscal year, planning staff will be focused on sharing that information to transform locations like OTRS Number Two from renderings to reality. We also have that small census project that we're working on, and that will engage quite a bit of our time in the coming year, but it will, again, reap rewards and get Warrenville the resources that it is certainly entitled to. the resources that it is certainly entitled to. But there's more. Six more projects are on our work plan. Several of these are continuations from previous fiscal years, but two are new. The first is business licensing. Certainly, the city has licensed businesses for years, but we're going to move that responsibility from the Finance Department to the Community Development Department. And in doing so, we envision using business licenses as an outreach and a retention tool to communicate with our businesses, to show them the opportunities to educate about programs they might not otherwise tap into, and to establish ourselves as a resource to help them as they look to invest and grow in the community. The second is a pop-up shop program. It's specifically focused on supporting existing local entrepreneurs. One of the things that I've learned in the last nine months in communicating with different entrepreneurs in this area is a primary need they have is for a space to sell their goods, to get out there, to be seen. And we are seeing communities across the region respond with a pop-up shop program. The nearest examples to here are probably in Batavia and Berwyn, and I would invite you to take a look at what our neighboring communities are doing. It's a really great way to create an energy and a vibe and to get those entrepreneurs out into the community and to be seen. So we'll be working on developing a program for your review to make that happen. We would anticipate pop-up shops would be an opportunity that could be explored at the OTRS location and other city-owned properties over time. We also think this will complement the initiatives that we've been working on this year related to mobile food trucks, and also thinking about working with our partners and finding ways to get our entrepreneurs involved in community festivals and events more. We see that in other communities, and there's opportunity for that here so we can respond to those needs. There's a lot of project work to be done in fiscal year 25 as well, and all of it has to be balanced with our fundamental core services. In fiscal year 25, we expect to see a significant increase in new construction value. In fact, the value that we're anticipating is more than double what we've seen in fiscal year 24. I've got confidence in these numbers because it comes to us after reviewing the pre-application meetings we've had, conversations with developers, courtesy reviews that have been before our plan commission, and applications that are currently under review. Here is a list of opportunities that we have on our radar. There's more than a dozen substantial projects here. All types of development are captured by this list, different phases and different scopes of work, and I know there will be something that will come up that's not on this list, and it's going to be great. We're going to work it through the process and make it better. Before I wrap up and answer questions, which I'm certainly happy to do, I wanted to share my last slide of this first budget presentation, and I wanted to say thank you to the community development staff, some of whom are here today, to the senior leadership team for welcoming me into the team, and to city council. I really am so happy to be a part of the city of Warrenville. I'm generally, I'm genuinely excited about everything that we have on the radar for fiscal year 25, and I thank you truly from the bottom of my heart for your trust and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Well done. Who would like to be the first to comment? See what I did there?
I do. Thank you for that. I have a feeling I'm going to hear about this tomorrow during a staff meeting.
Alderman Lackett.
This is more serious. You're so, we're so lucky to have you. It was hard for any transitions, hard, and you just made it so easy, so simple, you know. We still love you, Ron, if you're listening. We still do, but it was just, it was amazing. And it's amazing just what you and the staff get to do, too. Just looking through some of these numbers, just quick highlights, I mean, 600 permits, 23 million, 1,700 building permitted inspections, and 400 code cases that are open, ongoing. They're not quick and easy. We all know that. But the thing that stood out to me was with 2024 and what you have projected for 2025, and we know anything can change, but even with the 74 million that you're thinking this year, the 23 million last year, you have commercial companies, people wanting to build here in Warrenville. I mean, that's $100 million within a two-year kind of span. So it kind of shows that people are coming here. They obviously like working here. They're seeing the process. They're going through it, and there's a lot of exciting things coming. Food truck, awesome. Pop-up shops, awesome. I mean, it's a good, like, filler, right, until, like, stuff gets really developed for us to kind of help the local entrepreneurs and try new food and get people excited and get everybody out. So love all the ideas that you've brought and all the changes that you've made, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman.
Davlos. Thank you, Mayor. I just had a comment. I always save these reports for community development because I learn so much about what's going on, and some of it I have not remembered or do not have enough details or whatever, and so it's a wonderful wrap-up. So thank you. Both of these presentations today have been a lot of work, I think, and have provided information as an alderman that is very helpful to me. So I just want you to thank your staff, all of your staff. I have sort of a request or a thought I've been having, and that's about development. Warrenville through the years has been, for whatever reason, which we won't talk about necessarily now, has resisted development at some point. And as I talk to constituents, I notice that a lot of people don't actually have the right information. So they think that the condos and apartments and all the units we've built are really going to be tough on the schools, or they're going to be tough on the police department, or they're going to make traffic impossible to get around, none of which I have experienced or heard about. But I've spent a lot of time explaining to people, no, that's not. Here's the benefits of having this, you know, not just the tax, you know, keeping our tax rate low, but there's other benefits to buildings than you, I'm preaching to the choir. But it makes me think that if there could be some sort of a communication piece maybe they could find on the website or whatever, yeah, to let people know that this development is not ruining our town, it's not making it, we still are Warrenville. You mentioned this at the beginning, that we're sort of a developing city and all this, but yet we still have our sort of small-town friendly community charm, and so that's not going to be ruined. But I think people need the facts about what is happening, what are the effects of these development, and to sort of have information so that the wrong information and thoughts don't persist out there, because I do continue to get these conversations, get in these conversations before I'm having to say, oh, no, that's not true. So I guess all I'm saying is, we're doing, I think we're doing an amazing job, and it's planned and financially really sound, and it's going to have all kinds of positive things. But I think if we had something on the official city website or the communications director could figure, that we could let people know what are the real effects of this development and what are not, what we don't see happening. So that's all my comment would be.
I really appreciate that feedback. In fact, kind of in line with that, Administrator White and I have been talking about doing a video series to talk about issues like, you know, what is the impact of development? What does it mean to respond to the market? There's a whole series of questions that I think we can dive into, and so I look forward to doing that in the next fiscal year, and I'm sure it'll be a start, and it will build over time, but I think there's opportunity there. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's great. Thanks.
Oh, who did? Oh, City Administrator, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the council that at the end of both the administration presentation and the community development presentation is the department work plans. Again, lots of parallels between that and the citywide work plan, but if there's comments or questions, not only about the budget presentations but about the work plans, this is your time. You will have other opportunities between now and the budget workshop as well. Thank you.
Well done, Amy. We are so fortunate to have wrestled you from Naperville. I remember talking to Doug Krieger, the city administrator over there, sometime after you came to us, and he pointed to me and he said, "Stop stealing our best people." You have certainly lived up to that. You've got a tradition in your Department of Excellence, and you're continuing that along with innovation and enthusiasm and new ideas. We're just so delighted that you're part of the community, and I thank both of you tonight for highlighting to the community. So many things go on behind the scenes. People just assume decisions are easily made, and it's just one, two, three, and we do whatever we want, which is certainly not the case because of the things that we do are very calculated, well-thought-out, and all with the idea of service involved, and you've made that very clear tonight of what you provide to the community, and I'm very grateful for that, for the fact that you do it and we're getting that message out. So thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seabird.
Bob Seabird Albright Court, almost 20 years to the day. February 17th, city of Warrenville passed the home rule ordinance. Section 3 of the ordinance has been ignored for 20 years. But now you have an opportunity to correct this. In last Thursday's Daily Herald, they stated that the city of Warrenville is creating a new five-year strategic plan. It stated there will be high-level goals. I cannot imagine a higher goal than a five-year plan that would give a property tax reduction to the taxpayers. I am not requesting, as section 3 of the ordinance states, to reduce property taxes, but only requesting not to increase property taxes over the next five years. Actually, the property tax revenue would continue to increase annually, but the increased funds would be transferred from the home rule sales tax revenue, as stated in the ordinance from 20 years ago. This sustainable revenue source was identified and placed in the ordinance. We can also identify the funds necessary for this program because there is a ceiling in the annual increases under the state tax cap. The example of the last levy, 4.95% increase. 5.0 is the ceiling. If we took the 4.95, we would obtain a little more than 11% of the home rule sales tax to offset that increase. The inflation rate has dropped. CPI has dropped. The feeling is that we will reduce this level in the next few years to 2 plus or minus, going down from the 4.95. This would reduce the requirement of revenue from over 11% to 5%, simply 5% of the sales home rule, sales tax revenue, to offset the increases in property taxes over the next five years. It's time to complete what was started 20 years ago. The ordinance is passed. The hard work is completed. You just have to take the next step. At the next city council meeting, I will present the economic and technical forces that impact the property tax structure.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to official and staff comments. A couple of things tonight from me. The special census was mentioned earlier. Field representatives are still needed for that process. All are welcome to apply, retirees, college students, people looking for temporary employment or a second job, people available to work flexible hours, which includes, can include days, evenings, or weekends. The pay is quite reasonable, so if you're looking for some part-time work, you can apply at census.gov/communityjobs. That would be census.gov/communityjobs. If you're looking for some part-time work that would help the community capture some revenue from the state and federal funds that would not be available without the special census, so this is a very important thing for the city. The strategic plan was mentioned also. We're undertaking efforts to develop a new strategic plan that will guide the city's priorities for the next five to seven years, and we would certainly like some representatives from our stakeholders, the residents, to help us with that. The last process that we, the last time we did this process was 2015. It's time. It has to be refreshed every few years as things change constantly. We're holding a series of facilitated public focus groups in March, beginning on the 5th and the 6th here at City Hall. The information is all on the website. If you're available and interested in participating, please complete the form available on the city's website at warrenville-il.us, and follow the link for strategic planning under news and spotlights. The link can also be found on the city's Facebook page, and if you have any questions and you want to be involved, call the administration department. They're always available. Looking at you all. We would love to see more people get involved. Obviously, making plans for the next five years of what the community wants to see, how we want to look after five years or seven years, what do we want to emphasize, what do we want to put aside, how do we want to spend our resources, these are all decisions that we work at all the time. Having input from the people that we are serving would be very, very helpful. That's why the community survey was taken and why that's going to help us get started on the strategic planning process. But it's a long process. We have facilitators that are going to help us make sure we do it right, and we're excited at the prospect of renewing that and refreshing it going forward. That is all I have for this evening. Clerk? Very good. Treasure?
Nothing.
Thank you. Alderman? Everybody just wants to go to work here. I can see that. I love it. Administrator?
Sorry. Because I know I'm going to break the trend. I apologize. So we've talked a little bit about the budget and budget planning and the strategic planning, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone that while we cover very high-level topics within the budget presentations for each department, there's always the list of items, wish list items from the community of new programs, new initiatives, things that we would like to see happen in the strategic planning process will help guide that vision. But on the other side of that vision is the budgetary constraints and the financial picture of what we do. And so I would like to take this opportunity to remind the community that we are having a budget workshop on March 16th at 9:00 a.m. It is a Saturday where all of the folks you see up here, as well as the senior staff, gets together and dives much deeper into the city's financial picture and what goes on with the city's finances, how we spend all of the resources and tax dollars that we are trusted with, and so I would invite you to come. It is a public meeting. It happens right here in the city council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Brooke. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Would someone like to make that motion? Alderman, Alderman Kuckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the February 20th, 2024, city council regular meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davlos, and the discussion of the agenda as presented. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved as presented. We have several sets of minutes that need approval. Pardon me?
Just the agenda, not the consent agenda.
Oh, the agenda. I'm sorry. Okay. That's why we have a lawyer, make sure we say things right. Approval of minutes. Alderman Kuckenberg, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2024, city council regular meeting, to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2024, closed session meeting number- meeting number one, to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2024 closed session meeting number two, and to approve the minutes of the February 12th, 2024 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Second.
Second again by Alderman Davalos. Discussion of any of those minutes or changes? Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved as presented. Now the consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept staff recommendation, wave second reading and pass ordinance 02024-09, approving an agreement with hotels for the exchange of certain real property and property improvements. B, accept plan commission recommendation, wave second reading and pass ordinance 02024-10, approving site-specific amendments and major amendment to the final plan of planned unit development for Lot 1 in Cantera H-5 and H-6, 4405 Weaver Parkway, Central DuPage Hospital Association Cancer Center. And just as a side note, I see folks in the audience, I want to just say that we are delighted that you're in our community and that you're making additional investment, and the work that you do benefits our citizens as well as our neighbors, so we're glad you're here. C, accept plan commission recommendation, pass, wave second reading and pass ordinance 02024-11, amending the city code zoning ordinance, regular liquor and massage establishment license regulations. D, accept staff recommendation, wave second reading and pass ordinance 02024-12, adopting and publishing a revised zoning map. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-12, approving a revocable right-of-way and covenant agreement for 27 West 680 Warrenville Road. F, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2024-13, approving an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County for the OTRS number two project. G, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2024-14, awarding the contract for the OTRS number two Phase 1 and utility improvements to Martim Construction Incorporated of Elgin, Illinois in the amount of $1,120,325. H, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and authorize staff to advertise for bids for the 2024 construction projects outlined in staff's February 7th, 2024 memorandum prior to formal approval of the FY 2025 budget. I, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and appoint Megan Keebler to the Tourism and Arts Commission for a term expiring April 30th, 2026. J, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and appoint Natalie Clements to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring April 10th, 2024. K, receive and file minutes of the 2023 annual reports for the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. L, receive and file the FY 2025 work plan for the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. M, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission meetings held on September 19th, 2023, and December 19th, excuse me, September 19th, 2023, and December 19th, 2023. N, receive and file minutes of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting held on December 5th, 2023. O, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on February 8th, 2024. P, receive and file report of invoices paid up to February 4th, 2024 in the amount of And O, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before March 4th, 2024 in the amount Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as read by Mayor Brummel.
Take your choice, clerk. Two enthusiastic seconds there. Maybe we can start having multiple seconds. All right, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
And Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved as presented, and when you folks go out to celebrate tonight, make sure you go to a Warrenville restaurant, okay? All right, we have one item under the regular agenda. Would someone like to make that motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2024-15, waiving competitive bidding and approving the contract for well number 13 test pumping with municipal well and pump of Wapoon, Wisconsin, in the amount of $35,112.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Presentation, Phil Kukler, our Public Works Director. Good evening, Phil.
Good evening, and thank you. Staff learned about a week or so ago that the city needs to obtain an additional water sample from the new well that was drilled, well number 13. Then included with the agenda back materials is a proposal for municipal well and pump, who is the contractor that actually drilled well 13, to come back out, install a temporary pump, perform another 24-hour pumping test so you can purge the water out of the well and get a good sample of the water. The reason for this is there's multi-jurisdictional litigation that is going on with several municipalities throughout Illinois and the country for the makers of PFAS, and the city is, staff is going to be obtaining water samples from the existing four wells, but we just found, just learned a week ago that we could also, or should also, obtain a sample from the new well. Had we known this back in November, or back in the fall when the test pumping was done, we would have obtained the sample then, but this isn't the normal sample that we would obtain when drilling a well, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Phil on that? Sounds like a necessary thing. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do I need a roll call for this because it's money? Roll call, please.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Phil. We have nothing under unfinished business this evening and no new business to discuss, no need for a closed session. Who would like to make the motion to adjourn?
Like to make a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second by Alderman Lockett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn. Thank you very much.
This conference is no longer being recorded.